Okay, it is three o'clock. We will call the October 19th City Commission Study Session to Order. And I see Martha's standing up. Are you gonna, are you gonna lead this discussion?
I, I hope to lead it.
Okay.
Okay. The topic for the presentation today is the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. And it's an update on the design build team selection process that we've been through so far to date. See how well this goes for me. It was you? Okay. We're rolling now? Okay, thank you. In my presentation, I'll provide you some information on the wastewater treatment plant background, a little bit about the existing wastewater treatment plant, a feasibility study that we completed in 2016, 2017, and talk about our current 2020 NPDES permit, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. From here on, we're gonna call it wastewater discharge permit because that's much easier to say. And we'll talk about the progressive design build procurement process that we're working through, our schedule, the teams that submitted statements, qualifications, the teams that we've shortlisted and talked with, and then eventually the selection of the design build team, and talk about project schedule, some of the next steps, and kind of what my hope is, some consensus that we come to today after this presentation. The, I'm still not working, Jacob. See if it, am I going better? Maybe now I got it. Thank you. Maybe I didn't put it in there, shove it in there far enough, but I think it's working. The original wastewater treatment plant was first constructed in 1926, and to date, we still have one structure that's in service from 1926. At that time, there's a pump station that's located down on the end of Ash Street, on the west side of the Smoky Hill River, and that pump station was also installed in 1926 and pumped the wastewater out to the treatment plant. Prior to that, you can guess where the wastewater went, into the river channel. So, lots of improvements since then. In 1948, built primary clarifiers, trickling filters, and some intermediate clarifiers. Then it discharged to the Smoky Hill River, which is off to the east of the plant. In 1961, built a similar parallel plant, same components, and some additional solids handling. In most treatment plants, you have a liquid process that travels to the Smoky Hill River, and the biosolids or the solids is treated through the primary digesters, and currently is liquid applied to land for beneficial use. And then in 1979, constructed a building for wastewater collection to be housed in. 1992, constructed a maintenance building for the wastewater treatment plant. And then in 1993, we did a rather large upgrade that I'll talk a little bit more about on the following slides. And 1994, a belt filter press building, which actually takes the liquid and out of the biosolids, turns it into a cake, and then we can haul a more drier product to the farmland as opposed to a lot of liquid. So a lot less transportation on the road. But that's a little bit about our existing wastewater plant. It was, its address is 596 North Marymount Road. As mentioned, first constructed in 1926. It has a rated capacity of 7.25 million gallons per day. When I started in 2003, we treated roughly 5 million gallons a day. Today, we see about 4 million gallons a day. A lot of the industries have put water conservation practices in place and reduced their wastewater costs. And the 1993 upgrade is really our last major upgrade. And at that time, we added an activated sludge process to remove ammonia and to reduce the BOD loadings, and ultraviolet disinfection to disinfect the treated wastewater before it found its way to the Smoky Hill River, and a final re-aeration, which, that's a photo of, and it adds dissolved oxygen back into the water to help the aquatic life that lives in the stream.
Is that the bubbler?
The bubbler.
Okay.
The oxy charger.
I remember the bubbler.
Takes three trips down and creates lots of bubbles through the different stages. And go back and we'll talk about our NPDS permits a little bit, or wastewater discharge permits. In 2005, we received a permit that had a schedule of compliance that we were to complete a study to assess what it might cost to remove ammonia to eight milligrams per liter and phosphorus to 1.5 milligrams per liter. And at that time, KDHE was going through a process to try to find out, what's it really gonna cost Kansas to meet nutrient removal? So it was a very high-level study, and not very specific and detailed, but it gave them an idea of what facilities would need additional treatment and what it might cost. And then in 2010, we monitored nitrogen, phosphorus. 2015, they gave us target goals for nitrogen and phosphorus. And also KDHE came out and had an individual come out and take a look at our treatment plant and see if there's something we could do operationally to improve nitrogen, phosphorus removal. We weren't successful. Our plant is just not designed for nitrogen and phosphorus removal. So, you might say, why do we need to remove it? Well, if you think about your lawns, if you put nutrients on it, it helps your grass grow. And the same nutrients in the river, a low volume is good. It provides aquatic life. But too, too much nutrients, what it does is grows algae blooms and really does havoc to the water quality and reduces the dissolved oxygen. And the end result is fish gather that, those toxins in their skin tissues and their blood, and eventually it can be deadly to them. Probably heard about the dead zones in the ocean which are caused by the nutrients. This is really a similar situation. And algae blooms are also harmful to humans. If you think of Milford Lake and the issues they've had with the algae blooms, and water treatment plants have a real difficulty treating that. So, it does have some human aspects along with the environmental. Trying to get all these buttons right here. So, we did a feasibility study, again, started in 2016, and really at this time, we were really taking a hard look at what could we do to, for nutrient removal. There's a long list of, total of nine options, but really what it boils down to is we got three potential treatment processes, and they each start with the conventional activated sludge process. And we either add a treatment sequence of anoxic, anaerobic, aerobic to treat it, or we add an integrated fixed film activated sludge, where we add fixed or free-floating media to the conventional activated sludge, allows more growth area for the biomass, or a membrane reactor, which is really just a combination of membrane process and conventional activated sludge. So all of these options are really playing upon the treatment process we have, but in conjunction with that, we looked at, do we retain the primary clarifiers, or do we go without the primary clarifiers? Do we use chemical for phosphorus removal, or do we use biological phosphorus removal? So, a lot of different options we looked at. At the end of our evaluation, and we used a triple bottom line where we look at economic, social, and environmental aspects. Economics, pretty straightforward. Capital cost, O and M, staffing, is it constructable? Can we expand it? Social is, how hard is it to permit? What will the public think? And is it, what's about safety? Environmental is, is it reliable? Is it proven experience with it? At the end, the most cost-efficient and applicable alternative was the conventional three-stage reactor with primary clarifiers and biological phosphorus removal. That's a process that's, our operators are familiar with. It's a conventional process. It's well-established. We've had it for over 30 years. There's plenty of competition among vendors for all of the equipment that's used. Also, a part of this facility plan, which I want you to believe was really a healthy document, that we spent a lot of time looking at a lot of components. Really, I'm pained to get it ranked, not to show you that, I'm just trying to make it look like a useful trip. These masks seem to dry out considerably. So, the other aspect of that feasibility study is we looked at the equipment. And the equipment's been in there about 30 years. Typically, we look at the useful life of being nearly 20 years. So, it's exceeded its useful life. We developed a list of equipment replacements that was about a million dollars a year. We chose not to start putting those in service for the fact that, well, will we have clarifiers? What other processes and structures will remain in service? Will we have the same primary digesters anaerobic, or will they be aerobic? So we held off on those improvements till we get our basis of design report or a little further down the road and have a roadmap for our project. Overall, the estimated cost for the nutrient removals, roughly 27 million, and the equipment replacements are $5 million. And we plan to fund this through the state revolving loan fund at a low interest, loan. So, here's kind of the nutrient removal requirements, and they gave us goals and limits. And at the end of the day, what they're really holding to is for total nitrogen is 10 milligrams per liter, and the combination of nitrate and nitrate, which makes up our total nitrogen, 606 pounds a day, is the annual average limit, and that is over a 12-month rolling period. And that's based on 7.25 MGD facility. And phosphorus is one milligram per liter and 60.6 pounds per day. Another issue is we have more stringent ammonia limits, and really, all I want you to gather out of this is I put the 2015 numbers for daily and monthly averages, and then this is our 2020. And what you see there, as the months and temperatures get warmer, the water gets warmer, and what they've determined is the higher ammonia levels in warmer temperatures are more harmful to the aquatic life, so the ammonia limits are driven down during the warmer months. And typically, we see, you know, one or less for our ammonia numbers, or in the case if we have something that enters our plant and kills off our bugs, and it seems like every one, two, three years, we have something that comes in and infects our plant. So we are either doing a wonderful job, or we have, we're out of compliance with a high number, which we recently had in the end of September. And of course, we try to find out if anyone's doing anything different with our pre-treatment and to date. No one recognizes anything that they're doing different, and they may or may not even understand that what they're doing could have some harmful effect on our treatment plant. So.
That was the, the high ammonia levels that you were just referring to?
Yes.
I think we got something in the, okay.
We did, just at the end of September.
Gotcha.
First part of October. And I think it's been a couple of years since the last time it happened. Typically, we travel to Linsburg, borrow some of their bugs, bring them back, and breathe new life into our bugs, and get our process back in order, and it takes. Mark, I'm trying to think about our timeframe. Was it about three weeks from beginning to end?
It varies depending on how upset they are. Anywhere from three to six weeks.
Yeah. This time took about three. So, pretty.
These are, this is the trickling filter process that we're talking about when you see the bugs died?
The activated sludge.
The activated slug.
The aeration basins that are ammonia removal. So, we just.
So that would be something that with the new wastewater treatment plant, we'd be looking at, we wouldn't have like these fluctuations with the ammonia as much, we'd be better able to control it?
Well, what we're hoping to do is put, we have a pH monitor on our plant influent, and if we see something come in, we kind of get an idea, but we're gonna try to go out, all of our wastewater is pumped to our treatment plant, so we're gonna install some pH meters on some of our larger wastewater lift stations and try to get more of a heads-up on what's coming our way. And be able, we have some additional primary clarifiers that are not in service that we could offload some of the influent and treat it differently, similar to what we did when Schwantz had their ammonia issue. So, we have some options, but in this case, right now, we only monitor at the influent of our plant, and by the time it gets there, it's.
It's there.
It's there. It's just gotta find its way through a couple of structures, and there we are. So, we will make some changes to try to resolve some of that, have a little better monitoring system, and hopefully, we'd like to find where it comes from, but we haven't been successful. So, but our NPDS permit or discharge permit has a real specific schedule. I believe you've heard this before. The basis of design report or design memos due to KDHE by April 30th of 2021, and really that'll be a roadmap. That'll tell us what are we gonna build, and that's the next time, or one of the times we'll be updating you on the process. We'll have costs with that. We'll have an understanding on the equipment we need to install, so much better concept on where we're headed and how we're gonna get there. 60% design plans and specifications for KDHE review and approval by January 29, 2022. We'll begin construction in May of 2022. Construction lasts about two years. We'll be at substantial completion in May of 24, 2024. And basically, substantial completion means we can use the facility for its intended use. And then, ultimate compliance with that permit by December 31, 2024. So, you're seeing that this process takes about five years from beginning to end. So it's a lengthy process. So, now we'll talk a little bit about the progressive design build process that we're using. In December of 2019, we talked with you all about the delivery method, using the progressive design build method, and utilizing HDR as our owner's representative, which is really, as an owner's representative, they're an extension of our staff. And we executed that agreement with HDR in April of 2020. And you might remember, some of our dates shifted about 90 days because of COVID. So, we have a, some of our components, we have to advance a little quicker as we move through, but we believe our schedule still works out.
Need to flip your screen there in case they're doing that for television, Martha.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, got so busy talking and lost my way. So, remind me if I forget. Thank you. So, better go one more.
Yep.
So, this is the process that we're following for the procurement of the design build team. It's similar to what we did at the South Water Treatment Plant. We had a mandatory pre-submitting meeting at the wastewater treatment plant site, toured the site, told them what our needs were for the project, gave them a chance to ask questions, and then we requested qualifications. And from that, then we shortlisted the design teams to look at. And this case, we had two design teams, which I'll talk a little bit more about, that submitted. So obviously, we moved forward with both of those teams. Then the next step was to request proposals. The proposals included a draft contract markup, which we're using the same contract that we utilized out at the South Water Treatment Plant, our base agreement, prior to negotiating any changes with the contractor on that project. So we think that'll really reduce our legal expenses by using the same document. And each of the design build teams were required to mark that up, to identify anything they thought needed to be changed for their needs. Had confidential meetings with each of the teams to where they came and could ask us any questions they wanted to about the project, and we'd provide them information, and the goal was that we didn't share their information with others because they was trying to, you know, determine how best to put their proposal together. We also asked that they include some fee and rate proposal information, office overhead, profit, general overhead for the entire project. So, that a little something to compare against them, and then an estimate of what they thought the design fees might be. And then at the end of that process, our, our goal is to select the design build team to move forward with. So, this is just kind of a summary of the dates of those items we just talked about. And currently, we've been through all the processes. We, these were pretty close coupled due to our 90-day delay, but we're, we did our design build team interviews on September 29th, and our goal now is to be able to walk away from here and have a consensus on which design build team to begin negotiation with. And basically, we're following our purchasing policy, so starting negotiation with them is just that, we have to reach an agreement, or potentially, we can move to the, the other design build team. And that's just basically following our, our purchasing policy.
What was the deadline for having this completed? Are we under some kind of a deadline or something for, from KDHE, or am I misremembering?
No, that's the schedule of compliance, and that's that five-year time for, period for our permit. They want us to be up and in compliance with that permit doing nitrogen and phosphorus removal.
Gotcha, by the end, and the end of 2024.
End of 2024. That's, that's really the, kind of the end of the road for, for this process, and it's also the end of our five-year permit, so we'll get a new permit at that time. So, we had two teams that submitted their statement of qualifications. One was Black and Beach in association with Walters and Morgan, and the other was Burns and McDonald with CAS Constructors. Both of those teams, we shortlisted and moved forward with the selection process. We, as our policy calls for, we developed an evaluation form that we use for each team, kind of identified the highlights there. We looked at their experience and capabilities. That had 15 points. We looked at their key personnel, 15% or points, and then just really looked at the proposal and the interview and active projects that the team members are working on, looked at the project approach. And we, we're looking at their statement of qualifications, their proposal in the interview. We're taking all of these different meetings that we had with them, and really looking at, how well do they collaborate with each other? How well did they communicate with us? How, how did they work as a team? And then we looked at their project insight. How far did they, how much work did they do looking at the information we gave them? We gave them plans for upgrade in 1993, NPDS permit or capital improvement programs, and a large volume of information. How well did they look at that, and what, what did they bring out of that to the meetings? Then we also looked at, what's our execution plan? How do they plan to get this done? And these are kind of an example of what their statement of qualifications and their proposal looks like. So you can see, it was fairly detailed document that they sent back to us. We also looked at their project organization, their management, safety, and then, as I mentioned earlier, their, their fees. Our selection team was Pat Young with HDR. He's not here today. Jessica Adam-Weber is here. She's our owner's rep for the project. She was involved in the interviews and the entire process, so she's very familiar with where we got. Myself, Mark Peterson, electrical engineer, and I didn't see Jacob. He must've got hung up with something at the treatment plant. And then Kevin Urban, he sat in on the process. His first day with us as an engineer in Tech III was September 28th, and these interviews were September 29th. So, we threw him in the fire immediately after he came to work. I think he found it to be an interesting process for a day. We let him vote, but we didn't count it. But, but he knew that in advance, but he had, but he had an opportunity to speak his mind in what he thought of the interview process, so anyhow. So, now we're down, you probably noticed when I submitted the information to you as the city commission, it didn't have the answer of who we were selecting. I didn't want to make that publicly knowledgeable to the design build teams. I wanted to be able to talk to you first and be able to go through what we see as our recommendation, and then get any thoughts or ideas you have from there to move forward with. So I'm gonna, I tried to summarize all of the different components that we, we looked at. So, our recommendation is Black and Beach in association with Walters and Morgan. Black and Beach, they have a contracting company for construction that's called Overland Contracting, and it's owned by Black and Beach. And then, so Black and Beach is responsible for the design, management, execution, and delivery of the project. They've done 70 design build projects in the past 15 years, and Walters and Morgan Construction is a dedicated sub to them, and Black and Beach has worked with them for the past 22 years. One thing we noticed in our interviews and presentations is that the design manager for Black and Beach and Walters and Morgan had obviously worked together on a project or two. One they highlighted was Tulsa, Oklahoma, and they seemed to understand how each other thought and who was gonna, whatever the other one was gonna say ahead of that time, so they seemed to be a pretty well-oiled machine and working together. And then Walters and Morgan's experience with Slina, I put 30 years down, but I think I did a project with them in 1985 for the filter, so it's really maybe a little longer than 30 years. But they've rehabilitated seven of our major wastewater pump stations. They actually were the contractor for the 1993 advanced treatment project that we're looking at upgrading and the UV addition, and they've done some capital maintenance improvements at the wastewater plant. They also were the contractor for the Phase I and Phase II water treatment plant improvements for the airstrippers and the settling basins, those two large projects. The new lab, office area, and so on was constructed. And they've done also the downtown well field. They did the airstrippers and the pumping inside the building and some capital maintenance improvements. So they have a lot of familiarity with the Slina area and our projects. Black and Beach and Walters and Morgan, I just identified some Kansas projects that either Black and Beach has worked on or a combination of the both. They did a wastewater treatment plant, Black and Beach did, in Johnson County. Black and Beach did wastewater plant in Lawrence. Black and Beach and Walters and Morgan together in Johnson County. Black and Beach in Alatha. Black and Beach and Walters and Morgan at Call Point Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is for the United Government of Y and D. So they've worked on a lot of, these are fairly large Kansas wastewater treatment plant projects, so they have a lot of experience with wastewater treatment. And so then, talk a little bit about their project approach. And I think what, what we came out of as a group is that the Black and Beach and Walters and Morgan team really personalized their qualifications and presentations to be set to, towards the Slina wastewater plant. They reviewed all of the available project information, which led them to have a very strong insight to what we needed to do, what our current structures were and their conditions, and to develop a very strong execution plan to get the project done. And they also presented some potential nutrient removal solutions that we hadn't thought of, that are fairly new processes that weren't looked at when we did the study five, six years ago. years ago. So, there's some other options out there to take a look at. We've just got to determine if they're feasible or not, cost-effective. And as far as project organization, management, safety, both teams ranked very similar and well on that. The fee and rate proposal, what I learned from that is one team was very thorough in their estimate, and the other team was more global. Just kind of talked in more general about what you might do if you had a big project. And what I walked away from that with is that I thought, you know, they gave us their home and field office overhead, general conditions, profit, which are kind of standard numbers that when you're talking about a $30 million project, you know, add dollars to the overall cost. So, we wanted to have a feel for that. But what we came out of that realizing is that we need to do the Phase I or the preliminary design kind of in a two-step process or two parts. To get Part One, which is the basis of design report, get that put together, get that reviewed by KDHE, and have our roadmap totally identified so that we know exactly what we need to finish the design on and complete for the next round with KDHE. So, we're not trying to guess what we might build. We know exactly what it is and can base our fee on that. So, it'd be a two-step process. Second part would develop the final design and come to a guaranteed maximum price that we would utilize in Phase Two for continuing with the detailed design and construction. And again, this is really the process that we followed out at the South Water Treatment This is probably a little bit of a rehashing the same story, but basically, the project design phase, we'll get the BODR, Basis of Design Report, to KDHE in April of 2021. 60% plans and specifications by January 29th, 2022, and our 90% document developed in the guaranteed maximum price in April of 29th, 2022. And with the intent of the construction phase or Phase Two to begin in May of 2022, be substantially complete two years later, May of 2024, and again, meeting the NPDS permit by December 31st, 2024, is really the driving goal of this. So, next steps. One of our next steps is to talk with you all and get your opinion and answer your questions about the design build teams, and to notify the selected design build team and to begin negotiation of that agreement. And again, it's just a negotiation for trying to get a fee and whatever to put together so that we can bring that back to you. But the real authorization of the design build team and moving forward will be when we bring that Phase One, Part One agreement for the basis of design back to you in hopefully November of 2020. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, but that's our plan. And the approval of the basis of design report to KDHE in April of 2021, that'll have costs, so we'll know where we stand on costs, and we'll have made conscious decisions on what we're doing and how we're doing it. Authorize Phase One, Part Two in May of 2021, and again, Phase Two for construction in April of 2022. So, it's kind of the same story over and over again as far as schedule, with the goal of December 31st, 2024. So, fortunately, that gets you to the end of me talking, and it's time now to kind of talk with you about any questions or comments you might have. Try to get a feel or a consensus from you on our recommendation for the design build team, and to, our ultimate goal would get authorization to be able to go ahead and start negotiating that Phase One, Part One agreement to move forward. Obviously, until that's approved, we're still working on that selected team. So, at this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and Jessica, Mark, Kevin? We'll let you even answer questions too, because you were involved at this time, so.
Okay, I'm hoping somebody up here knows more about wastewater treatment plants than I do to start asking questions, because...
Well, I couldn't begin to challenge the technical aspect, other than it sounds good. My question really just at the contract, there's a representative from HDR on the team?
Yes.
Does that cause any issues when go to bidding out parts of this?
No, because HDR acts as our owner's rep. They are totally, they are just an extension of our staff.
So, they're solely in that capacity only?
When you say they're on a team, they're on our team. And they're not on, you know, one of the submitters' teams.
Yeah, they're our team, and, yeah, an extension of our staff. And by agreeing, and Jessica could probably add to this, by agreeing to be our owner's rep, then they're unable to compete as a design build team for the project. I think that's where you were headed with your question. That's why they weren't competing as a design build team. Jessica, do you want to add something?
No, you covered it.
Okay.
Well, is there anything that KDHE has hinted, or just from reading industry literature, that might reasonably be on the horizon 15 years from now that this plant needs to be able to accommodate?
Well, I'd like to say they haven't made that greatly notice, but you might notice we started ammonia removal in the early 90s, and we're just now getting new limits or reduced limits in 2020. So, that process took 30 years. We talked about nitrogen removal in 2005, 2007, and here we are, 2024, when they're expecting us to meet that. So, their timeframes are longer. There is a couple things. Do you want to cover those?
Well, I was just going to bring up the fact that...
Could you please step the microphone? That way, people, the public can hear.
So, KDHE does have a planning horizon to bring plants to E and R, which is enhanced nutrient removal, but that's 15, 20 years out, so a lot of plants are planning for that inevitability. That would typically drive down your TN to about 5 milligrams per liter, and your phosphorus to about 0.5 milligrams per liter. The treatment considerations that the design build teams brought to us, they all can be enhanced to be able to treat that. Your first big step is getting to B and R, and so future improvements would be able to meet those future KDHE regulations. But that is going to be a part of our considerations with the design build team.
Thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but KDHE's been very good about incorporating it into the permit process and kind of telegraphing their punch. They've not sprung a requirement on us with a short horizon. It's all part of the permitting process.
Yeah, they will communicate all of that way upfront. They typically, like Martha said, they'll give you about a 15-year planning horizon if not. So, they'll let you know that it's coming, and then they'll set goals, which are not limits, and then they make sure that you have a plan for compliance, just like you do right now.
So, basically, with nutrient removal, they started that back in our 2005 permit or 2007. So, 15, 20 years is kind of the standard to give you in advance. And I think we have, from what we've talked about, we have a plan for phosphorus removal, the nitrogen. They're all just enhancements to the process that we put in place, and obviously, we'll be leaving a space for those when they do come. As you can see, the nitrogen and phosphorus numbers change a little bit over time. Now, they're more focused on phosphorus than they are nitrogen.
So, just when this bill gets paid off, that would be about when the next round of suggested goals would come around?
We did get an extra few years here. We have paid off our wastewater plant from 1993 for the 20 years that the loan was in place, but that seems to be about the run. But it definitely takes a while, and they're very good at giving you a heads up because they understand what it costs to put these in process. Rod, as you probably know, Commissioner France, we were talking about the wastewater plant years ago and what it might cost, and then the water plant, and the idea that we were drought vulnerable. KDHE gave us a little leeway, thought we should be worried more about drought than we were about our wastewater plant and meeting these permit limits, and kind of flip-flopped on us. So, do the water plant first, do the wastewater plant second, so...
How much of the current wastewater plant will be used, or will some of it still be used?
Some of it most definitely will still be used. The structures, I think, most that'll go out of service, assuming we stay with the primary clarifiers in service, and that could change as we go through and look at these new processes. The trickling filters, we have not been using those, and I don't know if I can... I don't know that you can see that from where you are, but these are trickling filters, and they won't have a purpose. Don't believe the intermediate clarifiers have a purpose. Primary clarifiers are in, based on the facility plan, but as we move forward, there could be some thought that they'd come out of the process. Been a lot of discussion about the solids handling process. We have anaerobic or no air. We heat to treat versus aerobic. Some thought we might be making a change when you talk with them. Our plan includes keeping the primary digesters in service because they're in fairly good repair. They need some equipment replacement, but structurally, they're sound. And so, those would stay in service, which then would bring us back to where we'd probably keep the primary clarifiers and get additional treatment from them. But they are things that have been discussed. The aeration basin stays in service, they just get modified. Final clarifiers stay in service. Grit removal, depending upon the option, could require a change.
You've given us some estimates on what you think the cost to be, but all that depends on what we keep in service, and not until April of 2022 do we get a guaranteed maximum price. So, between now and then, we really don't have any idea what our cost...
What the best option, and truly, when we look at costs, it's not just about capital costs. We have to look at what does it take to operate and maintain this? And part of our efforts and what we've been driving into all of the design build teams is it has to be something that our staff can operate and maintain. Has to be operator-friendly, something that we can deal with. So, the real goal, and the reason we haven't done a lot of replacement on equipment for the last five years is some very wise city commissioner asked once, can you guarantee me that this structure will be in service when we upgrade the treatment plant? That has stuck in my mind that that's something really important, because equipment, you can spend a half million dollars on a piece of equipment very quickly. So, we've been very thoughtful, and I'd like to think maybe we've done enough maintenance and kept things in place. We've been pretty fortunate that we haven't had any major issues and were able to get to this point, because truly, we've got about 30 years of equipment life, and that's very good for this type of facility. So, that gives you a little bit of idea of what we'll be keeping. I think that's the gist of it. And we could, one plan would add an additional aeration basin, an additional final clarifier here, but that was in the plan from 1993 that we could add that, and that we might need some space out here for some anoxic or basins with air, with, some with air, some without air to make the process work. So, UV disinfection is over here. It's one of our maintenance projects that we've kind of held off until we get a consultant on board. It's 1990, 93 vintage equipment, and there's been major advances in that. We can probably save 50% on electric cost, Mark?
Close, close, yeah.
Yeah, so, we can help pay for that upgrade with electrical savings, and those will be the type of things we're looking at as we move forward in equipment replacement. But it just didn't make sense to do too much equipment replacement and then later find out, but finally, here's where we're at. There's been a lot of advances in treatment technology. There's a couple of processes we want to look at. We don't know if they'll pan out financially, but we want to give them a quick look, make sure we get the best treatment process we can, because some of this data is, you start thinking about, you did it in 2016. By the time you're building it, you're seven or eight years later, and technology changes pretty quickly in the market.
Will those be led by the design build team or by HDR as far as who leads us down to those paths?
Well, the way it's worked on the South Water Plant, and I would say we've had some very spirited discussions between the design builder, HDR, and city staff, because it's really a team effort. We develop costs. It's a very open book process. We see what each item, if we ask for something, we see what it costs. We understand the cost of it before we make that decision. It's value-based. So, I don't know that I'd say it's led by one or the other, it's more collaborative. We do it as a group to try to make the best decision as a whole. So, would you want to add anything, Jessica, or...
No, I think you covered it.
Actually, I was going to suggest that you kind of compare and contrast typical design bid-build. The designer, somewhat in a vacuum, prepares the design, puts it out to the market, and then the bidders are bidding. They're not in that conversation of, we think there's a more effective or cheaper alternative. This is what you designed, we're all going to bid the same design and be done. Design-build brings the designer and the contractor together, and it creates that opportunity to have a conversation about, you know, this might be, we as the contractor could do it cheaper, it might be more effective, and there's a lot more collaboration, as Martha was saying.
And we look at equipment that we're familiar with and that we've been able to maintain and operate. We know what has longevity. We try to look at what does it cost to operate and maintain it? What's its life expectancy? Some of the processes, when you get into the additional media that you put in the bases, might have a 10-year life, and they're somewhat newer technologies, and I think they're a little driven up in cost.
So, I like to think of, like Martha said...
Go ahead, step up here. I'm sorry, gentlemen.
Sorry, I have a bad habit of that. I talk really loud, so I assume everyone can hear, but I think Martha's depiction of what HDR serves as is an extension of staff. So, I like to think of it as we have, you know, architectural, mechanical, electrical, civil engineers, but also process engineers. So, it's as if we're working in our own offices here with the City of Salina. So, when ideas are brought about, HDR has done designs for every treatment technology that's been considered. So, it's a way for the city to have the benefit of our design experience and to backcheck the suggestions that are being made by the design builder.
Yeah, that's where I made, there was a few spirited conversations about how one would design something versus the other engineer, but ultimately, we worked through the processes and could select what was best for us at the city of Salina and for our particular project. So, it's, it takes some commitment that you're going to be involved and make those decisions, but it's, I believe we're going to have a better project at the end, is what Mike mentioned. If you design bid-build, you get what the designer put together. In my past world, it was always good to design something I'd already done once because it was easier, instead of looking for the newer, best way to do something, and that's what we do here, is look for the best way to do it, most cost-effective, operator-friendly.
So, if I understand it correctly, the trickling filters and the bank of stuff north of, those are, you said clarifiers?
Intermediate clarifiers.
Those will all disappear?
I don't know what disappear means. I'm not sure if we'll try to...
Well, they will no longer be there.
They'll no longer be in service. I think, we haven't talked about how they disappear. These have large rocks in them.
Right.
For the growth of the biomass on the surface.
And those are not in service now, and you'll take the intermediate clarifiers out of service?
They've been out of service because they work in conjunction with the trickling filters. Now, whether we save some of these basins for extraneous flow or other activities, we really haven't got too far into that discussion. All of the wastewater is pumped into our treatment plants, so we can have some high flows come in instantaneously in wet weather conditions. We have used a couple of the primary clarifiers that are not in service in some of these structures for extraneous flow.
So, essentially, those items have not been in service for some time?
That's correct.
And we are then getting better treatment out of a smaller footprint? Is, the processes must change? You went through the list of structures, and it sounds like we're keeping most of them?
Yeah, once you get down in this area, other than maybe grit removal, I think we might have to do something with that because the air would be harmful to our downstream processes.
So, what's being changed out? Is it just the stuff that's internal to the structures and a different treatment technology?
In the activated sludge basins, that's where we've kind of looked at whether we put membranes inside of those, or we put the integrated fix film, which is basically media that allows the biomass to attach to it, so you get a lot more area for growth of bugs, more homes, for lack of better terms. And then the activated sludge, if we add, we could look at needing an additional basin to accomplish all of that, and we've talked a little bit about that. But these are all concepts that we've thrown out. They still truly need to be vetted in deep detail, but we intend to use as many of the structures as we can, because concrete's expensive, makes it most... structures as we can, because that's, concrete's expensive, makes it most cost-effective for us.
Sure, sure.
And really, when we come back with the basis of design report in April, and that's an aggressive date to get all of that work done, I'll say that, but that's the schedule we picked so far. And then we'll actually know what structures are staying in place, what equipment needs to be replaced, and kind of where we are cost. It'll be a roadmap to complete the project.
Is there a concern about being able to continue to process during all of this? You know, I always look at, you know, it seems to me like you're trying to keep things in service while upgrading them, so I guess that's your problem, not mine.
It's what we do.
But it just sounds confusing to me that how you are able to...
And when we look at plants, I told you one of the comments was, how does it expand? How's it phased? Here, we're divided into three structures, three activated sludge basins, and usually you can take one down, work in the other two. So it's a phasing process, and when we built this in the 90s, that was part of the concept. How do you make upgrades to this 20 years from now or 30 years from now? So those are all things that we keep in mind when we design a facility. How do we phase in enhanced nutrient removal down the road? These are, these are what makes a project fun, is to think through that and do, Mark's laughing, but really, it is. It's the fun part, because it requires you to really think ahead.
Some people think it's more fun than others, unless tomorrow...
Well, you have to have a Plan A, a Plan B, and maybe a Plan C, but, you know, just a way to make sure that you get things done. The water treatment plant was really more challenging than when we did the wastewater plant, because something about everyone waking up with no water in the morning seems pretty dangerous here. We can get it out to the wastewater plant, everybody will think it left their house. Our problem will be treating it before it makes it to the river, but water is really the one that people expect when they turn the faucet. But I think we can work through the phasing. We left it in pretty good shape, I think, in the 90s to where we could add, might add, just because we've got five minutes for history, that this project, I worked on the design of it and was on-site for five years while it was constructed. So I think I've seen this project from the inside out. Mark's did all the electrical design, so we have a lot of background on the treatment plant. And then when we look at Walters and Morgan, three of their staff that'll be working on the project were out there on-site when we built that facility. So we have a lot of knowledge of what we did back then and how we made it work, so I think we can have confidence we can figure it out, especially with additional, between the design build team and the owner's rep in the city. We've got a lot of expertise to work through those areas.
So do you need direction from us, I guess?
Well, to see if you're in concurrence with us to move forward with Blackin Beach and in association with Walters and Morgan. And again, this is just first step to go negotiate with them, try to get that Part One put together as an agreement to bring back to you. And then once we accomplish that and you agree to that, then we really have a design build team in the project. But we have to get that Part One put together. That's our first step.
All sounds logical to me.
I agree.
Yep.
So let the fun begin?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, we have about five minutes before the commission meeting, so thank you, everyone, for being here. And Kevin, I'm curious to see when your vote starts counting, if you'll let us know when you...[1784.97][1784.97](Laughter)